This evening in Joplin Early Childhood Center, the order, please. Rule call. Mrs. Worsley. Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Is it on?
Present.
The 2024 tax rate hearing, Ms. Worsley.
I don't think it is.
Yes.
Riley, is yours on?
Yes.
Okay. I couldn't hear you.
Okay. Tonight, we're presenting the documents for the tax rate hearing. They were publicly posted in Joplin City Hall, Dunaway City Hall, Joplin Early Childhood, Memorial Education Center, and the Joplin Schools website. This hearing is to present the tax rates for the calendar year 2024 that will be sent out by the first of November from Jasper and Newton Counties to all taxpayers for tax bills that will be due by January the first of 2025. Assessed valuations for real estate were $843,639,000, which was an increase of about $9.1 million over the prior year. Personal property assessed valuations were $335,73,430, or a decrease of $1.45 million over last year. But overall, we did see an increase of $7.66 million, or 0.65%. New construction was $8,517,320. Every year, the Missouri State Auditor's Office has a pro forma calculation that allows us to levy the tax rate that will generate the same amount of revenue that we received last year, including new construction. So that rate this year was $2.9147 per $100 of assessed valuation for the incidental or general fund. Our tax rate ceiling this year for the general fund was $3.1092, and the tax ceiling for the debt service fund is $1.2014. We'll be proposing at the regular meeting to set the rate of $2.91.47 in the general fund and 75 cents in the debt service fund. This will be a total levy of $3.6647 per $100 of assessed valuation. We're expecting it to generate $43,86,505 in local taxes this year. This would be $278,000 in new revenue, with $247,854 of that due to the new construction. We just want to say that we continue to strive to be the school of choice in the area. Our tax levy continues to be one of the lowest in the area, but we are operating on a less levy than we are authorized to levy, and we're offering more programs in many of our surrounding schools. If the public or board has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
Do you have any questions from the public tonight? The tax rate hearing has concluded. Do you entertain a motion to adjourn the regular session, please? We have a motion by Mr. Robertson to adjourn the regular session. Any further discussion? Hearing done, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are adjourned to regular session. We will call the Joplin Schools Board of Education August regular session to orders. We'll call Mrs. Worsley.
Present.
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Present. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do you entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Robertson, a second by Ms. Sherrick, to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing done, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, the agenda is approved. Reports. Board of Education, celebrations. We have a lot of celebrations this evening. We'll have more as the year continues. State Track Day in May. We had great results with the state track team in May. Neil Barstow plays seventh in discus by throwing for 160 feet. Our girls scored by 103, a team of Brian Cooper, Abigail Hager, Abigail Lowery, and Peter Lobo plays fourth. In the last few years, this girl set the school record five times and has been all-state twice. Congratulations. Joplin Schools Bus Camp. Joplin Schools transportation staff and volunteers held a bus camp for the kindergarten and first grade students on Saturday, August 16th, at Young Stadium. This was a great event to help the younger students learn about bus safety, take a ride on the school bus, get free school supplies, hot dogs, and ice cream. Big thanks to the sponsors, transportation staff, and volunteers, including the adorable buster, the bus, who made the day a blast. Opening day ceremony. We welcome to all Joplin School staff members of the 2024-2025 school year at our opening day ceremony and unveil this year's reminder that we are one team with one vision. We're grateful to be part of the Joplin community and be surrounded by fantastic teams of community partners, parents, students, businesses, alumni, and organizations who are rallying behind our schools and students this year. We had some special guests. It's a great way to kick off our year. And that's what we have. It's light always in the summer, but we decided to get the school year kicked off and ready to go. More celebrations. Student celebrations. Ms. Rutledge.
So we had one celebration. It was about the JHS Theater Department. This summer, the theater department performs their fourth annual Southwest Missouri Regional Youth Theater production of Flips. Any student in the Southwest Missouri area can audition or be part of the tech crew, and those selected perform a full-scale performance after just four weeks. Students from Joplin, Dunaway City, Carrapin Junction, the Osho Parkage, Converman, Magellan County, and Eldorado Springs represented in the show.
Thank you so much. Superintendent Data, report, Dr. Sekala.
Okay, we have a couple reports this evening, and our first one is Stacy Tracy with our special ed programs, and she's going to give you a glimpse of a program evaluation and address the board on some other things.
So in our special education department, we serve such a huge variety of kids with disabilities. We've got everything from a high-level student with one specific learning disability that needs support that is accessing the general education curriculum, all the way down to students that need total care support within our school district. Really proud of Joplin School District for being able to offer services that we can take care of all of our students with disabilities very well. So what we have at JBC, they offer integrated classrooms, which have both kids with disabilities and kids without disabilities. Low-incidence classrooms for those kids that need much more support and services. And then we offer our CBSS program at the early childhood as well to try to get as much language and early intervention as possible where we make the biggest impact. In the K-12 environment, we offer everything. Co-teaching setting is seen at the middle school and high school most resource level, so a kid that might be two to three grade levels below getting curriculum that drilled back a little bit to make them at where their skill deficits are and trying to move them forward to gen ed curriculum is our focus. We have basic skills for kiddos that are going to be working on the more functional environmental things. Behavior intensive programs for kids that are struggling with emotional regulation, who has their main barrier to accessing the curriculum, and then we also have to be assessed at this level. Secondary at the high school has a lot more to offer our kids with disabilities. We have job sites programs that gets our students out with support into a workplace setting with mutual agreements with the workplace, really getting them some hands-on job skills. The flex program as well for working students who are working and making money as well as trying to finish high school. And then FTC for another level of support within the FTC program for our students that are really hands-on learners. So I put in some numbers of where we're serving our kids most in this. So you can see the integrated classroom here at JBC contains the most amount of our students. We have CBSS. We average number about 15. That comes and goes and gives them to move in and out of our kids. Basic skills classrooms. We have site-based programs at the elementary level, and that is our fastest-growing population here in Joplin right now. So we have had to add more classrooms for basic skills classes at the elementary level as we get in more kiddos with more significant needs. We are serving about 61 kids in a behavior-intensive setting. Resource, that's really resource and co-teaching. Middle school and high school again have the most amount of co-teaching environments. So those numbers are reflecting of an extra resource level and co-teaching because a lot of our resource-level kids will be in a co-teaching or gen ed classroom for some subjects, and then in a resource setting maybe for the LA, for per math. But we push them in and out into the curriculum as much as we can, and science and social studies thrive for whatever reason. A lot of our kiddos with disability really thrive in science. I think it's that hands-on. They get to see how things look and change in the science world, so they really do a great job there. CBSS for K-12, we're at 35 total now. That's the high school, middle school program, as well as our elementary program. So we're serving right around 1,282 students currently. That number will probably go up as more enrollment comes in. We're not done with enrollment and then identification. But I will say, along with us testing and evaluating new students that have came to us that have been through RTI to get extra help, and then we find we need to do an evaluation, we have just as many that are moving up and out of special education. The testing kiddos again, they're meeting their goals, they're remediating and being able to go without IP. So that's the ultimate goal, isn't it, is to graduate them off their IP before they graduate high school. And we're very successful in that. You have any questions?
I appreciate the work that you're doing and the very vital department for the school district, so thank you. Wish us for this year.
I appreciate that. Our team is an amazing team. I've never been part of the team by a casual job with our special education department, and it's just an amazing time to be in the field.
I agree. Thank you so much.
Where do you go? Do you want to share our spec programming celebration, Stacy?
Oh, it was certification in several areas. The highest rating was a four. We receive a four in all areas, even at the time. But our overall score, maybe we're even four. The only one that was not a four was in our math scores, and we know that we've got areas to grow. They have a disability, and they don't have an IP for no reason. We do know that they struggle with the academies, so we're working on that. But it was a great celebration to be rated as a four district.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Ms. Tracy.
Thank you.
Our next item is our Joplin High School presentation, but before we get started on that, we have some students from Joplin High School here tonight, the track team. And if you all would come up, please, come over here to the podium. We've got some certificates for you as well tonight.
Okay. So these young ladies represent several of our girls that were also a part of the track team who can get around the track really quickly and then pass the ton much better than some of our Olympic. So Riley Strickland. Abigail Hager, who's not here, she's in coffee drive. Great. She's in the most of your group. They're all kind of active, so. Abigail Lowery. She's not here. Beal. And then Neil Barstow. Is Neil here?
He's at football practice.
Oh, okay. Well, very good for him. And he was in the discus group. Tell us real quickly, well, is he a gray this year or this past year?
Um, I did the 100, 200, 4x1. I did the 100, 200.
All of them, same. Very great.
I did the 100, 200, 4x1, 4x2.
Very good. And Coach Peters is here. Congratulations to our track staff at the high school as well, and all of our track teams in the U.S. We're looking to see you here again next year. Fantastic. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Does he still live in the middle school too? He still does that as well? Did you find someone back from middle school? Did you find someone back from middle school?
We'll continue off with our presentation from the Joplin High School administration.
Yeah, Randy. Really just wanted to kind of walk you through where we are in terms of the cell phones and kind of some of the backstories of how we got to today. I won't go through everything that I've already obviously shared, but the cell phone committee made up of teachers was established a couple of school years ago. Committee worked to develop surveys to gauge cell phone use in the classroom and to really see is it a distraction, is it an issue, where are they? And so a lot of information and meetings and back and forth and discussions over two years concluded, many teachers concluded, not all, I don't ever want to categorize it, oh, everybody says it's a big problem, but a majority and a lot of teachers at Joplin High School saw cell phones as problematic and a distraction in the learning zone. So during the last school year, we took a long, hard look at what could be done. And through discussion with the cell phone committee, teachers, and I also have a principal's advisory for student voice, we have of only students and myself, we get an opportunity once a month to discuss it. And as I got into discussions with those kids, what came out of it, I was pretty shocked. Most of them were very much for limiting the distraction. And I was taken a little bit back because I thought they're going to say, no, this is, we have to have our cell phones. And in fact, it was a complete opposite on many occasions, and it came up more than one time. So we decided we need to take a long look at what can be done. And so the thing I want to emphasize the most is this is not a new idea. We're really a firm, because this is what we said we would do all along. We've just provided enough guidance and support and now some resources into the classroom to be able to better manage. And, you know, we've dealt a lot with the education of our students, parents, and staff, communication with parents, additional support for teachers, and obviously additional resources for the classroom. We really feel like we're going to provide a better opportunity to limit those distractions inside the learning zone. And particularly using learning zone instead of classrooms because there are a lot of other spaces that are still learning zones, but there may not be a classroom. Obviously, you can make the connection between the two, but what I really want to focus on is there's more opportunities than just in a classroom where kids are learning, and the expectation is the cell phones are put away. A prime example, I had four class, grade-level meetings today, but these are the four classes in our high school. And one of the things, we just sat here in a learning zone, learning different things right now, but please put your cell phones away. Anybody have any problems to look? Ninety-four symbols, 2,400 kids. So 90% of our kids are going to do exactly what we asked them to do at any point in time. It's the other 10 that we have to continue to educate and work with and create new plans and help them understand why we're doing. And some of the things we did, we provided a consistent message across all classrooms, and we asked some of those talking points to be round first day to our students. A video was shared to relay the messages to students, and yes, as I'm doing walkarounds and I see my fat head talking in every classroom, because it's a video of me going through talking points, I'm like, do we really have to show this in every classroom? But yes, it was shared, and it was a fun time for me. Because I got to go in and say, see what that guy said? I agree with him completely. But a few reminders of going to parents and students with cell phone plans and what the expectations are. Students have access to their phones as necessary as they keep the key on them. So once it's, you know, eventually, as we get some of the classroom lockers, they'll lock it up, but they'll have their key with them. And so anytime they would need to get it, you know, some kids have to leave earlier, whatever the case may be, they'll have access to that. We've been keeping track of the number of cell phones collected each day over this first six days of school now, and we will continue to do that, especially once the cell phone lockers are replaced, just to let them know before and after compare the Just so we can know exactly what, if it's had an impact, is it less, is it more, is it good or bad? But for the most part, I think that the most that we've had in any single day has been, has been 16. And, you know, we had one on the first day. It's going back, it's trending in the correct direction because it peaked at the 16 on Friday, or on Monday yesterday, and now it's up 14 today. So it's, it went 1, 4, 9, 10, 16, and 4. Manageable. It's very manageable. And I'm glad to answer any questions you may have.
Have you had any second offenses yet?
That's a good question. I started before. I think we've had one kid, two kids. Two kids total that have reviewed already.
Estimated date of installation for the lockers?
We were, we ordered four, we ordered eight. Four of a more expensive model and four of the least expensive model. We're going to put four at Roy S. Wood, they have four classrooms. Four, two in each of our offices and mainly handle discipline. We're going to see how we like them, which one we like better, and which one makes sense, and then make that recommendation for purchase. We've got them from Amazon in two days. I've been, I have it in my office. It's combined, like the phone.
I'd be happy if you'd take it from me.
I was going to say, wait a second, as long as you answer it, yeah, that's fine.
You got to shut them off before you put it in.
So Randy, after you test and make a determination, I mean, what are you looking at as far as the timeline on this?
I guess the latest would be next semester, but depending on the four least expensive ones coming in, the, I've already got the access to the more expensive ones. I can't imagine the other ones being much different. In our custodians, I've already met with them to kind of, you know, lay out a plan on what this might look like, and I think at the very latest would be Christmas. I'm surprised it's that late.
Okay. And look, I applaud your guys' efforts to address this. I think this is an issue, you're hearing it all over the news nationwide. It's not just Joplin, it's everywhere. I think I recently heard that Tulsa banned cell phones in their entire school district, so it's gaining some traction, and for our kids to have that peace, to be able to just learn in a positive environment uninterrupted, I applaud you guys, but I think it's great.
Thank you. I was surprised in talking with some kids even this week, and one of them said, I'm actually talking to other people, and I met a couple of kids, which, I mean.
Who knew?
Take a picture. And others have said, hey, it really isn't that bad. I'll be able to get my home in time.
How are you going to handle smart watches? Like?
Well, there's a couple of problems with it. One, we got to shut the cell phone down when it goes in the box. That's the first thing. Now, some people are going to say, well, cell, you know, smart watches can connect, have connectivity without, I didn't know that until the end of the day. So I'm unsure as to what I'm going to do at this point, what we're going to do at this point.
And it may not be an issue, just, I was curious if it came up in the discussion.
And, you know, in a lot of cases, oh yeah, we've certainly talked about it, but in a lot of cases, it's the what if games originally. And we started kind of a frequently asked, like you said, where you are, frequently asked questions about that, and it's something we need to talk about probably by next.
It's not different than any other electronic device in classrooms that are causing distractions?
Sure. Sure. I just, I struggle with, one more thing we have to track, I realize it's locked up, but a kid says, well, I put it in there, where is it?
You have the key to it, I don't have it.
But overall, so positive and thank you for your support.
Do you think the amount of time during classroom transitions from having to put their phone in the locker and having to take it out at the end of class, if it'll impact classroom time?
We actually have two classrooms that are used. Well, one classroom that started today because we had a couple of teachers do donors choose last year. One box has already been in for a semester, so we kind of knew how it worked. And so I asked the other teacher that just started, like she had no experience with it. I said, shoot me an email, tell me, you know, how things are working. And I asked her specific questions. One of the questions was exactly that. How much time you can be getting, how much time at the end of class? And she said, early on, well, coming in was never an issue, she said, because that was just part of her classroom procedure. Come, get your keys, all labeled, just connect to the number that's at your desk, you go over the lock, you put it in, and that's all happening. There's about three, four, or five minutes, the teachers are, you know, taking attendance, making announcements, whatever the case may be. So that's just part of what her process is. And I said, okay, so tell me about exiting. And what she has said about the exit was, she's built in like exit activities and different activities as they're also leaving, so there's not as much congestion at the box. So it's almost as they finish, and so we're going to have to really work strategically on. But I said, okay, let's pretend, because you're going to, you may not have a closing activity, you may not be closed with the lesson, well, you did. She said, it's taken about two minutes. And that's with 28 kids. And she said, I said, how many do you assign in your largest class?
They said that the more expensive lockers are $242 about?
They're 179 is the model, and then the rest fans and some other shipping costs. And I think it's, I think it's less than that, but.
How many are we going to order? Do you know how many we're ordering?
I don't yet. It's one of the to-do, it's on the to-do list because, but you have to also figure out, like, you know, locker situations, in terms of locker room situations, what are you going to put in there? So I need to decide how many kids, because it's more than just one per space in some situations. So I don't anticipate more than 100.
Okay.
So that would get you going in terms of that.
Dr. Oliver, I appreciated the message you sent out to parents. It was very well-written and explained everything.
Randy, good, thank you.
That works.
Good.
Dr. Oliver, I'll add that I appreciate that you've done this really, what I would call the Joplin way. You didn't find another policy or another school that you just took, you did the hard work, you worked hard to make it really centric around what the needs are in your building, because I have the belief that you know your building best. So really appreciate the work that you did on that side of it, something that really works well for us. We're not worried about other schools, we're not worried about what other people are doing, we're worried about what works best for Joplin.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to your team for being here tonight. I know it's a lot of people doing a lot of work. So Ms. Toft, can we talk about health and dental plan and then financial statements?
Yes. The first month of the year, we've spent $885,648.63 of our Health and Dental Fund. Our budget this year is $8,128,000. That represented 10.9% of the total budget. I do want to remind everybody that usually we do see higher claims in the summertime with our staff being off and doing some of the doctor visits. It was actually up $888,637 from last year. But we did have one large claim of $159,000 that helped increase that amount. So any questions on the Health and Dental Fund? Okay. Moving on to the financial statement. The first month of the year were very similar as far as revenues, within $67,000 of what we saw last year at this same time. And expenses were actually down $24,000 from a year ago. So any questions on the financials?
Thank you, Ms. Toft. Public comments, Ms. Worsler. The consent agenda, I'd entertain a motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Schroeder to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion on this item?
Can we pull out item E and just put that in the regular agenda, please?
The Cabota UTV?
Yes.
Okay, we'll remove item E. Anything else? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Accounts payable, Ms. Toft.
Okay, our bill list tonight is $11,776,170 compared to a year ago of $7,269,692. The biggest difference there is the August payroll. This year it included that monthly payroll plus all of the payroll liabilities that we did not see in the prior year's report with the cutoff.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to approve our accounts payable as presented, please.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Sherrick, a second by Mr. Greenlee to approve the accounts payable as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing done, please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Tax levy for the 2024-2025 school year, Ms. Toft.
Okay, we're required to set our tax rate each year before September the first. As mentioned at the tax rate hearing, our assessed valuation is $1,178,712,530, which is an increase of just .65% from the prior year. We're proposing our levy of $2.9147 per $100 of assessed valuation for the operating fund and .75, or 75 cents for the debt service levy. For a total overall of $3.6647 for $100 of assessed valuation.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Greenlee, a second by Mr. Robertson to approve the tax levy for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Thank you, Ms. Toft, for your work on this. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Board of Education goals, Dr. Seketa.
I want to echo Ms. Toft's work on the tax levy. So thank you very much, and also the Finance Committee and everybody else involved. Annually, the board approves goals for itself to ensure that governance is done well and that there's oversight of the district and that we engage our community stakeholders. Last year's goals that you see, actually the 2425 goals are very similar to the goals that we had last year for the Board of Education. There is one item that was added in under number one, Model Continuous Growth, pursue and obtain MSBA Team Governance Award recognition annually. I think the benefits that come to the board, whether it be individual development of the board and collective development is very important. By pursuit of that award, it's really not about the award near as much, obviously, as it is about what we learn together and individually on the way to that. And that provides us a good template for a goal to get better as a board. Also on number two, advocate for Joplin schools and the students we serve, establish board priorities annually for legislative action that positively affect Joplin schools and all public schools across the state. Item B, that was added this year. Last year was the first year that I can recall in a long time that the board actually adopted legislative priorities. It's going to continue to be an issue for school boards across the state of Missouri as we move forward. And that step was added this year as well. And then finally on three, provide feedback to the superintendent, evaluate performance. Last year it was basically create and establish an evaluation tool. And this year would be to continue to utilize the tool. I think the tool that the board adopted last year was very well-done. It helped me and guided me in my goals and direction for the year, which also set the stage for the board goals to my goals, to goals with the leadership team, and then also all the goals, the principals in the building, that mirrored our comprehensive school improvement plan, which is what it should do. So we had what I would call very good goal alignment to that process. So I would recommend that the Board of Education approve the 2425 Joplin School Board education goals.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Hurd to approve the Joplin Schools Board of Education goals as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Boardroom audiovisual, Dr. Harding.
Yes, as you all know, we are in the process of remodeling the old kitchen at Memorial Education Center due to the need of more collaborative spaces, not only for our teachers, but even for our community members. We want to kind of upgrade and remodel those spaces. And part of that is the Board of Education room. As you can see, even with our roadshow we do, the lack of microphones we have, so we really took a deep dive at the audiovisual that we're going to provide, not only in the boardroom, but also in all those professional development areas. And so we're trying to find flexible uses for the audiovisual as well as for those rooms. Additionally, we have the three cameras that are in there that are almost ending life. They're about $13,000 apiece. So at some point in time, we're going to have to be replacing those here pretty quick. And so we're remodeling all these spaces. You know, Eric and I sat down and said, what can we do that's best for those spaces? That number one, again, is very flexible, but again, is upgrading to do something that we're not going to, you know, have somebody else have to take care of down the road. And so we put out bids and this is kind of what came back. It's a, the TVs, the monitors around the room, the camera system that Brad will be able to control from his studio. They're remote-controlled from there. And then also wireless mics that we can, that everyone will have one. And if we go on the road again, everyone will have one on the road, so we're not sharing mics. So there's 18 wireless mics in the package as well. And they can be used not only in the boardroom, they can be used across the hall in the other rooms. They can be moved anywhere in the district if you want to. That's kind of been a big need for us, as being a central point, not only for our teachers, but for community members for meeting spaces. So I don't know if Eric has anything else to add to it?
No, just that, like, we've kind of already hit on the boardroom. It'll actually be multifaceted where we can do PD in there also. And the TVs will either link together, like we have, like, demonstrating kind of here, or they can be independent, so you can home load the one PD session on each side of the room. And then it'll also allow for a presenter or a board member to remote in. And one TV up towards the front will have a central conference camera and stuff. And then there'll be also like mics hanging over the audience. The whole voice of the room can be heard, especially if there's a presenter that's in. And that'll really help that sort of sound.
Who would be ordering any extra wireless mics in case one doesn't work?
Well, we have, we counted it up and we needed seventeen, but we went ahead and ordered eighteen.
Very, very needed project, in my opinion. We've struggled with audiovisual over the years, in my opinion. This is not an ideal system for anyone that's setting it up on a consistent basis. So I think this is good for our staff and then good for the overall experience of people who will use that room, not just the board, but anybody in the Joplin School District who might use that room or the community.
I move we approve the audiovisual items presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Mr. Robertson to approve the boardroom audiovisual bid as presented. Any further discussion on this item? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Onboard bus camera system, Dr. Harding.
Yes, I'll have Travis and Cody come on up. So we have been researching over the past few, actually a couple of years, of kind of what our transportation department needs. And, you know, talking to our drivers and talking to the administrative staff at Transportation, it's pretty obvious that obviously safety and security is first. And within that, we have an onboard bus system that is currently aging out. It's over 10 years old. It's an SD card system, which what that means is to actually get the video, you have to get on the bus and pull the SD card off, take it into a computer, put it on the computer. You have all the video, you got to go find it, cut your clip, drop it down, email it to whoever needs it. On average, that takes about 40 minutes. So if you have a principal with a very angry parent in your office, that's going to take some time. Sometimes they get busy.
That's if the bus is on ground.
That's it, correct.
Plus, once you pull the card, the bus can't be used until the card's put back in.
You could just put another card in.
Yeah, you put another cards in. And we've had times where we had to tell the bus to pull over because we had an emergency situation that we needed to get the card off immediately. And so you have a bus full of kids sitting there waiting for somebody to go get to the bus and pull the card off and switch out the cards and let them get on the route. So there's a lot of issues and I can sit here and give you scenarios for hours. But the reality is, for our bus drivers to feel safe, for our students to feel safe, we've been researching this for about six months. They've been piloting multiple programs for over six months and they've kind of settled on a product that they really like. The current system they have is, our current system is four cameras. The new system we're proposing has eight cameras. So there's a lot of additional views that we're able to utilize, not only for student safety, but also in insurance situations. If there's an accident or something, we can look at it. And what I keep going back to is when we had the fire on the bus, you know, that bus driver had to do a lot in that whole process. If we had this system, really, the, once the bus driver radios it in, the dispatch takes over from there and knows exactly where the bus is at, can count and tell how many kids are on the bus, what's going on. And all the bus driver has to do is worry about the kids and not worry about anything else that goes with it. So the GPS is another component on this that our current system does not have. So with this, we will know where every bus is at every second. If you've done a tour of duty at the bus barn, a lot of the calls are, where's my kid's bus at? So the app seems to be working. We don't get near as many of those calls as we used to, but we still get some. And you still have to radio out to the bus driver, hey, where you at? What's your ETA to a certain location? Whereas this dispatch can immediately says, well, this is exactly where they're at. And so that will speed up that process also for families, knowing where the bus is at.
Will parents get an app that they can see where the bus is at?
So we push that out to the parents. And so, for the most part, the ones we're talking to, they're utilizing the app so they can see where the bus is at. So that's helping, but it's not everybody yet. We're still not 100%, but we're better than what we were before the app. So it's working so far.
It'd be great if we could integrate with ParentSquare, because, you know, get everyone on ParentSquare and...
We kicked it out on ParentSquare.
Okay.
We gave them the information, said, here's the app, download it, here's how to...
So parents, if you're not on ParentSquare, please get on ParentSquare.
Please, great, great chainless plug right there, thank you.
Estimated life of this would be?
Well, you know, it's technology. It's just the same as everything else, I would say, probably. They're updating their system all the time as far as the cameras. The nice thing about solid-state drives is that they do, I'm sure Eric probably vouch for those too, they have a very long shelf life. Need a lot of use out of it, I think they're adaptable, you know.
You were saying that, or Dr. Harding was saying that it's $12,000 a year annually. Does that include upgrading whenever new technology comes out? Camera technology improves, whenever you move it to the new bus, it'll come along with that upgrade?
No, it's more, it's more the health, they're monitoring the health and any upgrades that it requires, is what they're monitoring.
Is the subscription bus-based, like the number of buses based, or is it...
It's per bus.
So next, whenever we get a new bus next year, we'll have to buy a new subscription for that bus? Or will it transition to that?
If we did, or unless we get rid of an old bus, if we take out an old bus out of the fleet, then we can take that system and put it in the new bus.
Do you know how many times we're going to be able to do that? Because the current system's 10 years old, like you mentioned, wondering about how to age them out.
Explain that, like I understand where you're...
How many times we're going to be able to transition it to a new bus?
Well, we've been doing it now with our current system.
For 10 years?
So we keep doing it, yeah.
Okay.
But with this system, they're going to be monitoring a lot more of it for us. So right now, the system we have, it's ours. Like, we just have to monitor, if something goes, if something fails, we have to contact the company to come look at it or fix it. They're technically monitoring the cameras. Now, if a camera fails, we're going to have to pay for the camera, but they're monitoring if a camera goes out, they're monitoring any updates to the technology.
Kind of warranty the cameras have?
Five years.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the purchase of cameras for buses?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weaver, a second by Ms. Schroeder to approve the funding for the onboard bus camera system. Any further discussion on this item?
Just a comment, I mean, two things. One is the amount of time that Travis and his team have to spend with that SD card. It's lost opportunity. And so the way I look at this, it's like, okay, bring a new technology in. Yes, we're going to spend a little bit of money, but it also frees Travis and his team up to working on all the things that get pushed aside because this then becomes a priority. So I think that that's excellent because that'll give you some bandwidth. And then the second part of it is, if you look at that middle picture, center middle, and I have this on all my tractors and the fleets that I have, it is amazing how much that picture, when you see what's actually happening, God forbid there's an accident, but when that does happen, if you'd be able to just say, okay, here you go. I can't tell you how, from insurance rates and claims, that's affected the transportation fleets that I have because you can show that and it just stops all the he said, she said, it's right there. So there's another intangible there, but it's real. And I think we'll see some benefit out of that. Now, although we don't have many accidents with buses, but if you do, you have that right in front of you. And I think it protects the bus driver, the school district tremendously to have that.
And that's always...
That's a live shot right there.
And the resolution's great.
Isn't it? I like that it's going to provide peace of mind for our drivers and which can improve morale and everything else, which, wonderful.
And I think that's a piece, you know, being a bus driver is not easy. You know, that licensure you have to go through is not easy. And I think our drivers want to be protected. And want to feel safe. If there's a situation that happens, they can be able to say, hey, it wasn't, it wasn't on me or whatever like that.
I still drive, whenever they, when I interview them, I remember I get to a certain point in the interview where they're asking questions and everything. I've got a spot order, I always tell them, you know, all the buses have cameras on them. I point to the radio that's in my office, we're all connected by radio. And I said, that camera's not just there to protect students, it's also there to protect you.
Yeah, that's one thing I liked when Dr. Harding sent this out and we were looking at it. I'm sitting there looking, okay, what kid did what on the bus? Where's the issue? And I'm able to see, these kids weren't doing anything. What did they do? Oh, we're just showing you. The detail you're able to see in what is actually happening on the bus in real time, I can see being a huge benefit as we progress.
Well, I would add, I was in the group message that Don is referring to. We both were stopped looking for the issue. It was a discipline issue when they sent it to us. But I will say this, everybody has a Ring doorbell these days, right? I mean, there's an expectation, I would argue, in society that we have some sort of live feed that we can be able to access what is important to us. And our kids are our number one asset and priority. So for me, in my opinion, this really, as John had mentioned, this gives us an opportunity for you all to focus on the important work that you do, cuts down on your paperwork, and also gives us a better ability to monitor what's happening there. And I would thank you, you know, there... And I would think, you know, there are discipline issues on buses, of course, and if there are more eyes on that bus, or if they know that they will clearly be seen, that there's really not a lot of wiggle room from that, and that's probably gonna be helpful to the people who are making these decisions in terms of discipline, and handing down decisions after the fact of what occurs on a bus. So thank you for bringing this to us.
Well, when I told the principals that we are getting close to them having access to this and being able to pull their own video and watch, they were ecstatic, because there's many times that you're wanting to kind of either hand down discipline or not hand down discipline, depending on the situation, but you really need the video evidence to prove it, one way or the other, and so it's nice just to be able to do that, and for the principals at their fingertips.
There's also a way to block out faces on the bus, private series, also added that feature, which could be extremely helpful at some point in time.
How many incidents do we usually have?
There were over 500 elementary referrals last year, and about 300 and some middle schools, so usually about 1,000.
Okay. That's a lot of time to go through, a lot of SD card, so.
Yeah, and I would say, probably half. Half would require, would require someone to pull a video for a situation.
Thank you very much. Please vote. Yes?
Yes.
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 Yes. The item number E, the Kubota UTV, John?
Yeah, just, Matt and I talked about this, and he didn't have time to put an edit in A there, so I just wanted him to just take a moment and explain what he's doing with that, because it's not that, hey, we're tossing out a golf cart, we're buying a Kubota, we're doing other things with it, so if you would, Matt, just take just a couple, maybe a minute, and just kind of share what you're planning.
Correct, so, basically in a situation like this, the golf cart went out of commission, and it is well past its age. So, when things like this happen, with, especially with the vehicle, we really look at, from the district standpoint, like, what's the best fit? We have a side-by-side that we use, that our utility crews use, and a lot of our buildings use, that is still running well, but it doesn't, the one at South would not get used as much, so we're gonna send that one down to South, and then the new Kubota will be used by the utility crew for work around Jung, work around all the buildings, they take it out when they're spraying weeds, when they're watering the thousands of plants we have in the district. We use that all over the district, so they're constantly using that, and we load it out to buildings all the time when they're doing field days. So it's very well-used. So we just thought the best use of that, that item was to be at the utilities' use and not at South.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we use it, we use it a lot. South Moscow uses it a lot in the fall. Peters was here, he uses it for cross-country, and we use it for a lot of things down there. And the side-by-side, as Matt calls it, or the John gear gate, or whatever you want to talk about, is a better use of a little bigger beast of the equipment than just a golf cart. And so, it has more uses, we're even considering whether purchasing a snowplow or this Kubota as well. So, we're looking for not only buying it for the current uses, but what we can use it for in the future as well.
Okay, thank you for clarification. I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the Kubota UTV.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hurd, a second by Mr. Robertson, to approve the purchase of a Kubota UTV. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Ms. Schroeder, a second by Mr. Robertson, to adjourn to closed session. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, our meeting's adjourned, thank you so much.
And if anybody wants to run out and say hi to Eloise and take a look at the bus, she's right outside.
That is so very, very.